My energy, she fell. We even know she broke the tooth. And she just slapped, she said, "Wait." I was like, "What happened to your baby tooth?" And then we like, "Oh my God," because she's not that kid that she get hurt, she get back up and go. The other one is real baby fat. Well, it's, they told us not to worry about it for a while. We took it to the dentist and then about, about a month ago. I was like, "Her brats are terrible." And when I had her to look up, I could see, look like there was some kind of infection. So they had to take it out. And so the challenge is, do we put a spacer there or just wait? Because that's a long time to wait and not have anything yet. So that's the new thing. But they put their little girl with all that energy in a straight chair. She, she refused to lay there. And see, the other one, she's so loving her. She wants to hug. But even my high-energy one, she's so sweet. She'll come to the, "I'm leaving." And she'll be, "Bye, Grandma. See you later. Love you. See you tonight. Come get a kiss." And she goes like that and it'd be so funny. But she'd do that almost every single night, every time I leave out the house. And the other one, you know, you have to say, "Come here, uh, come here, Grandma, hug." So they just told, I told my daughter, "I love them both." I said, "But it's something different." I'm not going to ask you. Good to enjoy it. Yeah. See, are so adorable.
Yeah, is that it? Okay. Sorry about this. Had it nicely flagged and everything? Had it idiot-proofed?
I did, I did.
How's that air show coming?
Good.
Good.
Is your son at the end of the season or is this midstream crop fish?
He did, he did, he did fifteen hundred pounds today and he's done.
Oh, really? What about shrimp? Does he mess with that?
Too expensive, not a problem.
A lot of people. Pete.
Hama City Council Public Hearing Agenda. May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, five-thirty P.M. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Divatario.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Public hearing, none. Hama City Council Regular Session Agenda. May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, five-thirty P.M. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Divatario.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
All right, get your stand for our prayer, please.
Most precious love returned to heavenly Father, we thank you on this evening. We give you the glory and honor that is due your name, Father God. We thank you for this day right now that you've given us one more day to get it right. One more day to walk, to walk, one more day to do the talk right now, Father God. And we thank you for being able to be in the position that you have placed us in right now, Father God. And we do not take the assignment lightly. But most of the heavenly Father, we thank you for your darling son who you allowed to die upon the cross for our sin. And for that, we are eternally grateful and thankful. Father God, I ask you to continue to bless our city. Continue to bless our police department. Continue to bless our fire department as they continue to protect and serve us. Continue to bless our city administration. Continue to bless every worker in our city right now, the heavenly Father. Continue to bless the entire city as a whole. I ask you to continue to bless each council, each council district, each council person that represents their district and their family right now. Father God, if there's ever a time we need you, we need you right now. So we just thank you right now that everything will be done decent, order, and pleasingly in your sight. Because we know that you are not the author of confusion. So we just thank you for it all right now. And that we give you glory, honor, and praise and thanks. In your darling son Jesus' name we pray. Amen. By our pledge of allegiance, I act, ask that all veterans and active military please render the proper salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get an approval of minutes from our May ninth, twenty-twenty-three meeting, please?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Now we're down to presentations from our Grants Award Committee. Ms. Lauren.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Thank you for having me here today. So last year, the council created a grants committee to help with the process that you guys have been presented with. Some challenging processes over the years with awarding grant money to nonprofits. So we continued meeting and we came up with guidelines. We created a funding announcement. And then we also improved the application that we had previously. And if you look in your documents today, you'll have those listed. Does anyone have questions about the documents that were presented?
So just to be clear, this would be, we're working towards maybe for next year, being able to do this. This is not for anticipation of this coming fiscal year budget.
So we would, we wanted to present this now so that you guys could maybe use it towards this fiscal budget. You could also give our committee feedback if you wanted to change things. Because we didn't have a structure really previously. That was one of the biggest hurdles for the council, the city, and then for our committee. So our committee decided, we've got this together, wanted to give it to you this evening to review. And then let us know what you would like us to do further.
Yeah, I think the game plan was originally was to get some proposals to us for this upcoming budget with the nonprofits. And that was my understanding of it. And I'm glad we have somewhere to start with right now. And y'all covered a lot of ground quickly since there really hadn't, didn't, really wasn't much on the book spirit. So I'm glad to see something here. And I, you had any questions for us or anything? Or like any concerns or anything y'all came across while, while doing it, while meeting?
The, some of the, we had, we worked within the open meetings law. So we, we met here. We did receive help or the city did facilitate. Lacey and Charles Borchers really helped us when we were discussing the guidelines and things that we might want to put together and what we kind of felt like you offered us and wanted to see. So I guess maybe if you could each email your representative with feedback or maybe talk to each other and give us some guidelines and what you would like us to see. We started out with, if you wanted to get into the nitty-gritty of any of this. But, you know, we, we tried to start with a cap of fifty thousand dollars. We felt like, based on previous years and then what would happen with, within the past year, it would be a good, it would be a good starting point because the decision is ultimately up to you guys. We also thought it would be good to utilize the Grants Department to be able to receive the applications, to help, to put this, the funding announcement and the application on the city's website. So it's accessible to our citizens and it's more transparent. We felt like that was really important. That was a huge concern for you guys moving forward. So I, I don't know how, if you wanted to use this for the next round of funding, if this is adequate or if you need us to, to change anything. I guess that was where we were, which is our starting point. Just a nice structure of zones to move forward and let this evolve.
I think it's a good, good starting point. I just read over it, you know, so I mean, I think what you suggested about maybe sending in to the appointments, you know, any kind of recommended changes, modifications or something, I think would be a good idea. We can kind of work towards getting, perfecting it, you know. I'm, you know, I've read over, I think it sounded good. I like how you all had the caps on it, you know, the, some cap point. But I, you know, you have twenty people read it, they'll have twenty different opinions and, and suggestions, so. But, but yeah, I mean, I think it's a good idea and we, we need to work towards getting something together with some structure. So, so I think it's great.
I, I like the, the use of points. It's very clear on your application, how, how, you know, certain things are, matter more for the, you know, reviewing the applications. I guess how it would be implemented, this is just, you know, a thought, the, you know, our budget session, last time, we came up with a dollar amount, which was like the bucket. And then we awarded from the bucket. So what I think would be an appropriate way to do it is in our budget session, there's an amount of money that, that the city feels it can put towards nonprofits. You know, the mayor puts it in his budget, we review it. And it's still at that point, we're not talking about individual companies and nonprofits. We're just talking about the amount of money. And then, once we know what that amount of money is, it's handed over to the Grants Committee with this application, these rules that, you know, we, we review and, and just, and determine what would be the final application and rules for grading them. And then, I'm assuming, the award of the dollar amounts would go, would come from the Grant Committee instead of the council and the mayor. I, I don't know if that's what everyone else is thinking. I don't know if that's what you guys are thinking. But to me, that seems like a very hands-off, non-political way of doing it.
So, so part of our, just, some of our discussions were, one, if you go and look, we talk a little bit about the difference between a nonprofit organization asking for a grant for a project. And then the city also works with cooperative endeavors. And so we, we had a little bit of a question, yeah, delineate funding for direct services versus supplemental services. So we have organizations like Crime Stoppers, the Council on Aging, their bus system, that, you know, the city has these agreements with, that, you know, we, the council pulled out that bus program. So one of our questions was, do we remove them from that grants process? In that way, you guys can budget those things. So these organizations don't feel like they may be at risk of losing their funding. If these are truly valuable, these are services that the city does not want to engage in but would like to help an organization better our citizens. Then you could actually offer these grants to more nonprofits and, and maybe set up tiers. We didn't know if you would want to create tiers of like, at a fifty thousand dollar level or a five thousand dollar level. Like, it just, it got more and more into the minutia the more you went into it.
Sure.
So we suggested that you would take, that you would remove direct services from the grants.
So, and that's a good point. The, the Council on Aging with the bus, I think that we removed that and it was its own line item, as well as the animal control, but, and maybe even Crime Stoppers. Was Crime Stoppers? Okay, that one did. But the animal control did not and the bus did not. Because those were identifiable amounts. The, the, the animal control is based on population. The bus is this amount, so we can have a bus. But these other ones that you have in here as your examples, some of those are not direct services. Or we, we call them direct services because it's a cooperative endeavor, but it's just an amount of money that we have come up with to give them. So I don't know if that, like for CASA, Change Humanity Society, who was the first time last year.
Right.
You know, the Children's Discovery Center, the African American Heritage Museum. Those have always been styled as cooperative endeavor. So as you're discussing it, they've always been a cooperative endeavor, award. But they are based on an amount that, I don't want to say is arbitrary, but it's just what has been given. It's not based on population or this is the expense for that thing, like a bus.
Right. So I, I believe Crime Stoppers does have a direct expense that they use.
I think so, their tip line maybe is what it's?
It's the population.
Population.
To the details of it. Yeah, there's a population and there's a whole equation that there, they had in their ask. But yeah, the, as far as I saw, CASA didn't really have that. And T N G Humane didn't have it either. And I guess because there really wasn't the structure for them to ask based on whatever.
Right.
So that, that was one of the things that we discussed that you guys may want to get back to us about or even discuss in your budget meetings. And, and then, like we said, over the years, there's been funding for different organizations and different processes to move towards a different funding amounts. I guess I don't want to get into the previous, all the previous challenges. But I, I know the council seems to want to be able to make this a wider process or to at least more transparent, more nonprofits in the area. And by lowering that threshold to fifty thousand dollars or even, we talked about if it was a, if a new organization, you could even set it at a thousand dollars or cap it at five thousand. So if you were, have only been around for three years, you can only apply for so much money. That's not in here.
Yeah, I think the caps are.
It was just a basis. We were trying to figure out ways to make it more fair and to also protect tax dollar, the tax dollar money and to keep it project-focused, more than operational expenses.
And I think the cap is, is huge because, you know, it kind of prevents from, you know, requests of five hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, a hundred thousand coming in. You know, whenever we have different issues in the city with infrastructure and, and other needs that, you know, people would love to see improved, that's a lot of money. And the cap, yeah, structure is huge on this. We had really not much of any. And so I think we definitely need to, to keep working towards this structure here and having some parameters put in place and policy and everything else. And, yeah, I mean, I like it. I like where we're going.
I really like the cap amount.
Yeah.
To start with. And as Council Sam has stated, there's some good guidelines being said in here. Especially when you stated about if you've been around one, two years, three years, you know, you can only come for a certain amount. And I think from what I'm reading and what I see, it's clear-cut. So you, you know what you're looking at when you apply.
Right. And, and, and then when you go through the process, you kind of know, like, is this worth our time to, are we gonna, are we eligible for this? It gives you a little bit more, people, I've never applied for a grant. I don't, you know, but after talking with people who do work with that grant process, you really understand, you, you have an idea of what you should be filling in, what you should be accountable for and what the standards are. And I think having that structure will really help the process. And it'll also help, you know, over time when you're administering this grant, to have expectations of those recipients, to make sure they're using the dollars in a, in a correct way.
I like the, I'm sorry. I like the identif, the idea of it's an identifiable project. Say it's a, a summer camp or, you know, you guys need a roof or, I don't know, whatever, whatever fits within our guidelines instead of operational expenses. The other thing, Andre, I'm sure that we're going to need to talk about this during our work session, but I, kind of gearing our verbiage to direct services so that we have that identifiable. And then, do we need to change the cooperative endeavor if we're going to call it grants and it's identifiable project? And I think we got some things to flesh out from the funding side of it and how we line item certain things that are going to happen, like animal control. Because if we don't do that, we're not going to have animal control in the city. And then the bus in the same way.
Yeah, my microphone's on because I'm ready to jump into some comments. So they're all cooperative endeavor grants. But I do like the idea of splitting out those that are more measurable.
So what you stated, Andre, because I want, I think I'm on the same page with you. As far as like with the Crime Stoppers and the bus service and, and what was the other one?
The animal control.
Animal control. Since we were able to put those on their own line, can we just state those on their own line?
Sure, you can.
And the other process go that way?
Certainly.
Where we already know directly that this is, these services and stuff, that we definitely need it all. The bus service, and we, we know that. But the, the others could go through this process.
Certainly. And just to remind the council, we, we call it a grant and I'm okay with calling them grants, but they're not donations. There still has to be a, a public benefit reasonably commensurate with the amounts given. That's traditional economic development, some kind of social service or some other public development. And, and you do have that in here. That's good, Lauren, I like the, I like the language in here. They have to clearly understand there's got to be a public purpose and a public benefit commensurate with whatever award. And that's where probably your, your grading is going to come in for some of these projects. Some of those are more easily measurable than others.
So what we did to start with in the Grants Committee was we took the Cabela memo. The Cabela memo is the Legislative Auditor standard for what, what can qualify as people working together with money. And in the very first part of this, that's why they have the three things that the grants awarded through this program must demonstrate a public purpose, provide a clear benefit at a reasonable cost, and be within the scope of services that could be provided by local government. Like, we, we tried to really clearly associate the services being provided as something that in other cities, this might be provided by a staff member rather than a consultant or a contractor. And then we're, in our case, we're saying, instead of hiring a staff member to do, like, conduct forensic interviews with children after trauma, we're asking CASA, here's some money to handle that task for us.
And so maybe even with CASA, we asked them, can you give us a better idea of what it costs? What the city might cost you or per population? Can you give us an estimate? You know, that could be a question. And, and those questions were weighted. We also tried to offer, they can be a non, they don't have to be a 501(c)(3). So that might be, there, there are all these delineations with 501 statuses. We did not want to rule out organizations like a Rotary Club or J.C.'s. Those are technically not a (c)(3), they're actually a (c)(4). So they file a little bit differently. And then there's other nonprofits that don't register at that status on the federal level, but they're still a nonprofit and they're local and they want to provide a service to our citizens. So we really felt like that was important as well, that we help or enable local nonprofits to provide services to our citizens. So anyway, that, those are parts of the structure that we put in there. If you guys go back and read it, maybe that'll help you review it again. But like I said, we didn't set any tier levels or, you know, funding levels. We did not get that far. We wanted to start here, give it to you, see what you thought, and then let us know. And then if, hopefully it helps in this budget session and then in the awards process in the upcoming year. But, you know, we've all done a lot of work and we're really grateful for the help and the guidance for Lacey and Charles. I don't, they were very helpful because I'm a novice.
But you've learned a lot, learned a lot about grants.
I learned a lot about grants, yes. I'm very willing to help. So is my husband. My mom, I mean, my mom was the CASA. So these, you know, I grew up volunteering. So I think it's really amazing that our city is passionate about serving our community. And that's really what this is about. So we want to take that to the next level and, and just use these funds the way, you know, we want to use, you guys want to see them used and allow us all to work together. So it's just a better endeavor.
So we appreciate everything y'all done, it's a great job.
Thank you.
I know upfront, you're asking for a, you know, a detailed proposal and then all of that, it's really good. Are we going to get something or just a suggestion, get something on the back end that, at the end, a detailed report of how the money was used so that it does match with what it was intended to be used for?
Well, yeah, that's essentially already what they do. So they provide both their financial reports, either through an audit, through a 990 or some other tax filing. They also provide like a report kind of thing, a description, a summary of, these are the services that we provided. Here's how many people we outreach to, those kinds of things.
So do, whenever they do it, do they get the whole check at one time? Or is there, is there a balance left on some of the accounts? Like that, this past year that we gave whatever dollars to whoever, all those? Did they balance all those out to zero? Did they use all the funds or did they have remainder balances in them still that are?
Not, not everyone has used all their funds yet. But they, most of them are pretty close to using them all. Some have used everything. For instance, Crime Stoppers usually just does a full allocation at the beginning since it is a tip line that they organize throughout the year. CASA does theirs about every two months or so. Discovery Center and African American Heritage Museum are about every two to three months seeking reimbursement on expenses that they submit. So everybody submits things to get reimbursed.
So there's really, they always usually, is it like pretty much a hundred percent always zero out? Or there's balances a lot of times?
They always zero out.
Okay, okay.
The only other thing that we had left over this year is because we set the, the bigger pot of money and then made smaller awards through that. There was probably, I think, twenty-five or twenty-eight thousand left in the big pot that's just going to go back to the general fund. Since we did not make awards from that. So we reduced that down when we introduced the budget through the mayor's office. So you'll see that same lump sum. It is reduced down though and it meets more where the awards were for this year. And it also addresses some of what the Grants Committee had been moving towards in terms of a fifty thousand dollar threshold cap, those kinds of things. So it also looks at how we've been stair stepping with some of our organizations and, and all those things were factored in for the, the lump amount that's there.
And over time, you know, the council may want to reduce that cap from fifty thousand dollars to something lower. We just felt like the fifty thousand was a good place to start. It was kind of in line with where we'd been. And, you know, like I said, we, we played around with a lot of different ideas. Like T N G Humane had five thousand dollars, the first time they'd ever applied. So, you know, having those ideas on thresholds, if you'd like to recommend them, would be nice. But we wanted to start somewhere. And yeah, there are things in here that says, you know, if you could, so say someone wanted to do a project, you actually have, you know, this project is going to cost X, Y, Z. You have something there to have a start and a finish. We would, the grant request that it be done in twelve months, so it's within a budget year. You know, the, the whole thing so that these, you have a tangible effect. you know, the, the whole thing, so that these, you have a, um, a tangible effect, hopefully, for this money, and our citizens get to enjoy it or, or enriched by it. And that's really what we're trying to move, our idea was to move this toward. Anything else?
I do say thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you, Lauren.
And, and please share our gratitude to your, um, committee members.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
All right. Introduction number ordinance, number one.
Introduction?
Introduction of an ordinance to increase the monthly garbage fee from 1408 to 2098, Lacy Landrum.
This is the rest of the discussion, um, that we had last year, last calendar year, um, within this fiscal year. When we renegotiated the garbage contract, um, what we're proposing is moving the rate that we charge to the customers from $14.08 to $20.98. It is a $6.90 increase. This would continue, um, the recycling services at 190. Um, those are on the first and third Saturdays of every month from eight to noon. Um, the, just for some comparisons, and we can have more discussion at the public hearing, but just some comparisons. Jefferson Parish, twice a week, their low bid was $23.90. New Orleans has once a week trash service for $24. Baton Rouge has twice a week plus recycling that's once a week for $35.23. Calcasieu Parish is $19.95 for once a week. Lafayette is once a week plus recycling for $28.68. Nakadish, $22.70 for once a week, but the carts are rolled back in and out from wherever they live. Um, and then Ascension Livingston Parishes are once a week at 24.95. So, garbage, like everything else we have talked about over the last really year, has just gone up.
Now, you have two options here, one with, um, the increased paying for, uh, recycling and one for it not, is that right?
That's correct, yeah. The second one saves basically 50 cents, um, a month, um, so it would be $20.48, but that would cut out all recycling services in our community. The recycling services are used, we typically empty that roll-off big container, um, two to three times a month, so.
Can you find out for next meeting, how much actually of it is actually going to the dump and, and actually being recycled? Because when the last company presented to us, first time, they acted like 90% of the recycling was going to the dump anyway, so, and really wasn't being recycled. So, I'd like to confirm that and, and, and know if that's true, false, or what really is going on with that.
We can do that.
Because if we're recycling and paying for recycling and sending it to the dump, that's silly. So, I mean, I, I'd like to know if that's true or not, and what facts for the next meeting, yeah?
That may have been kind of the larger discussion that was being had at that time. Um, recycling costs have escalated astronomically in the last really three or so years. When China stopped taking the United States recycling, which is what was happening all these years, we were actually sending our recycling to China and to India. And when they started reducing the rates of contamination that they would accept, is when basically the United States recycling market went into the toilet. Um, so, a lot of that is because the contamination rates have been much lowered, and so that's sometimes why you hear that they don't wanna accept that. Um, when we had curbside, I think we had a lot more going to the landfill than we do now, because now you at least have an employee making a stop and saying, okay, wait, this isn't, we can't put clothes in the recycling dumpster. We can't put a, a pizza box that has all the pizza residue and grossness on it in the recycling container. So, there's a little bit better, um, I think, control on it now, but it is a, it is always a difficult issue when they drive to the manufacturing facility in Baton Rouge, and the facility looks at it and says this has too much contamination, and they have to take, take it to the landfill.
Yeah.
We can find out.
That's what I wanna know, because we're still paying for that, and it's not being what people are thinking is going on, so I just wanna make sure we know that, yeah?
Sure.
The recycling, um, how much does that cost the city, I guess, per month? Is that what this says, 1485?
That's what, I think I tried to put it on that spreadsheet, and let me see if I can.
It says roll off 185 per month, empty.
Yeah.
So, about fif- about $1,500 a month?
Yes, that would be the new, um, new cost. Uh, later on our agenda today are the recycling proposals, and, um, it went up, um, but we're, we're looking at still being, you know, quite affordable since it's in one space rather than doing curbside. Um, so, that's kind of like averaged out among the 6,200 customers or so that we have, and that number can also vary depending on how many people we have active at one time. That can, that can drop down to like 5,800 when Southeastern is moving in and out and those kinds of things. But on average, that's, we run somewhere between 6,000 and 6,200, and so that's where we were coming to that cost, uh, the actual cost, if I'm reading my spreadsheet correctly, and I'm gonna make it bigger, um, is around 27 cents per resident. Um, we're suggesting to charge 50 cents to give us a little bit of buffer, and the reason being is because that still covers the amount of staff that work, and it also covers when the city has to go and pick up something like a giant apartment complex moving out or something, if there's something unusual that happens, um, where city services are still required to come pick up some of the trash. Most of the time, the trash contractor will do all of those, there's just on occasion where there's some kind of crazy dump that happens or something like that.
The, also, back a while ago, we had a company that was coming in to do, um, recycling. If they got 100 people, I know I personally signed up, and then no one's ever heard anything about them again, any?
They have not reached back out to us or anything. Um, we, we still have that option, um, I don't know.
My guess is they didn't get 100 people to sign up.
Maybe not. That was supposed to be our Uber recycling.
Yes.
Something like that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And if y'all want to, um, we went ahead and put it on for this agenda, but if you wanna table the recycling contract for later, it's under resolutions, so that you can have a full public hearing on this and consider both of those items, that's, that's fine too. We went ahead and stuck it on today so that you would have all the information, and if you wanted to table that and then approve it for next time.
So, we're not on a deadline or something for that?
Correct, correct. But that way you could, um, look at the fee as a total rather than approving that tonight and then looking at the fee next time. It, perfectly up to you guys, whichever you wanna do.
Sounds good.
Sal Nicolosi, 3607 Highway 190 West. You know, I'm trying to figure this out now, because they're coming up with, you know, $6.90 a month more to the people in the parish, in the city. So, uh, why now? I know she's talking about recycling and all of that, but, uh, this ordinance to, uh, raise it without the, without the people really, uh, wanting this, from what I'm aware, you know, they complained about the $9.00 and some cents from whenever they raised it, whenever they brought in the new company. So, you know, it costed $10 what it was, but I just don't understand why we gotta come up to another $6.90 per month. You know, Waste Pro is, uh, you know, they handling the garbage situation, and, uh, you know, I, I don't think that we should, uh, put this on to people anymore, you know? So, it's something to consider and think about, the public who y'all represent. You should, uh, you know, consider maybe talking to the people in your parish or whatever in the city and figure out what, you know, what needs to be done, because, uh, you know, the recycling, I, I'm no, Trey, uh, Lacy's talking about recycling, but, I mean, y'all, have y'all been aware of this earlier or not? Of the, the raise on, on, on this ordinance? Y'all was aware of it?
Yeah.
So, this is, this is the raise that we talked about in the fall. The raise was never passed on, the, the raise in the rate was never passed on to the customer. So, this is the increase that happened in the fall, in, in late October, November?
Okay, I wasn't aware of that. I thought maybe they were aware of it.
That was the whole discussion that we had that you just referenced. So, when you said that there was discussion about an eight or nine dollar increase, the actual increase is $6.90.
That's on this program?
That's correct. This is the actual increase.
But the?
There was not an increase ever passed on to the customer.
Not yet, yeah.
Right, what we're asking for tonight is to pass on the rate increase that happened in late October, November to the customer. Your bill still has $14.08 on it.
So, now they're trying to raise it before, when it went up, they paid the same amount. We, you know, the residents paid the same amount, but we were paying more for it, it just wasn't, the cost wasn't passed on yet to the citizens. The city, I'm assuming, must have been subsidizing, taking over the difference that was from what we're paying currently. So, the overage, the $6, the city was, taxpayers were, tax balance was paying that difference up until now, if this gets passed through.
Okay, so, if the, if it, in other words, what you're saying is my bill's gonna go up another $6.90 a month, is that correct?
Yes, your bill never went up in the fall. It, it never went up. Your bill now will have an increase if this passes.
Whenever?
This would be the first increase.
Not when Waste Pro?
Correct.
And it took over.
They did not, we did not have a bill increase. When Waste Pro came in October, we did not have the customers have a $6 or a $9 or $8 increase. It was talked about, but that never happened. No one's bill actually went up that amount, because we didn't pass the ordinance. So, since that time, the city has been paying that difference in what Waste Pro charged us and what we got from the customers.
Okay.
So, now we're trying to put it together so that the city is not paying that excess that it's actually being passed on to the customers. So, everyone's bill, if this passes, would go up by $6, but you, it did not go up in October.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Well, I just wanted to be aware of any raises, any time we, you know, the public is the one who suffers on this, so.
Yeah, I think it's a good, it's a good question, because a lot of people thought that their bill went up, because there was a lot of talk about it, and I had lots of people asking me, but people's bill, their garbage, I mean, water could've gone up, it fluctuates, but the garbage amount has not been raised. It wasn't raised last year. It hasn't been raised in a number of years since we had, uh, Am Waste before that.
Okay, so y'all pretty clear on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Name and address.
Lynn Matthews, address 703 MC Moore. Talking about a price increase for recycling?
For garbage, uh, garbage really, I mean, recycling, but mainly it's focused on the garbage, which, you know, there's an option for recycling. So, if you do recycle, be fit.
Is anybody, so you have to get it, or you don't have to get it?
Well, the garbage?
No, on recycling.
Oh, the cycling, that's what we're gonna decide on at some point about the recycling, because if we get recycling, it'll be 50 cents more. If we don't get recycling, it'll be 50 cents less.
Oh, okay.
To the people. That's, that's pretty much what the options are right now on the table.
50 cents more, oh, okay, that's.
Yeah.
So, that's still not curb, that's still not curbside. So, we used to have the curbside with the blue containers. That's not at all what we're talking about, uh, just to be clear for anybody listening. We have, uh, collection sites on two weekends a month where people bring their recycling to the city to be sorted, and then we pay for those to be rolled off and recycled.
They can where?
Um, the 190 facility, the facility on 190?
190.
Right, yeah.
The Piggly Wiggly. So, people twice a month can bring their recycling.
And they take it where?
They, they take it to be, Baton Rouge to be recycled. And that currently happens.
To get to the Baton Rouge, the contractor comes and picks it up, and goes to the Baton Rouge Recycling Foundation, the MRF.
Oh, they do? Okay.
All right. Anyone else have any questions? Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divataria?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Resolution number one?
A resolution to approve the fiscal year 2023 through 2024 non-municipal fire and police personnel holiday closing schedule for the City of Hammond. Kevin Beecher?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, everything is the same from last year. The only adjustment we made, uh, we aligned Juneteenth to observe on Friday, June 16th, instead of the federal observance on June 19th. Everything else is the same.
Anyone from the audience have any questions or concerns on this item? Anyone from the council?
Sal Nicolosi, 3607 Highway 190 West. Uh, is this, how many days are the, the employees of City of Hammond Municipal and Police are getting right now?
Seventeen. How many? Seventeen.
That's what the new one proposed, 17, right? Okay, okay.
So, uh, from what I'm aware of, some of the other cities, they're not even, uh, you know, I think they're only doing like maybe 14 days, uh, a, a year, so I'm wanting to know why are y'all, uh, allowing, giving them 17 days of, uh, of the, uh, you know, the? Are y'all just asking for it, or y'all, or y'all getting it approved?
No, this is just, this is yearly approval for the new year.
So, so, in other words, the council's got a vote on it right now, is that correct?
This is the same number of days that we have had as holidays.
Okay, well, what I'm saying is like, you know, if some of the other parishes, from what I'm aware of in the city, they're, they're only getting like maybe 14, 12, 14 days, you know, paid days, and so, is this a special day that they're gonna, they're gonna get, or two days, or?
No, sir, these are just.
They got 16 at the moment.
These are just federally, federal holidays for the most part.
So, they all, they all gonna be, they all gonna be just, uh, so now it's gonna be 17 days, and how many did they have prior? 14, 12?
Seventeen.
No, how many, so, they had, what they had prior to this?
Was it, I thought it was 16.
It has 17. Juneteenth was approved last year, I believe, was the first year that we officially celebrated Juneteenth, and so it moved from 16 to 17.
So, you're giving them an extra day?
Last year, is what, when the governor and the federal, when the governor and the federal government both recognized Juneteenth.
Okay.
The City of Hammond did as well.
Okay, so it's a federal holiday.
It's a federal holiday and a state holiday.
It's not the city that's doing, it's a federal holiday, but now y'all putting it into effect, is that correct?
We observed it last year when the federal and the state governments both recognized it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
This is not the first time, this will be the second time we celebrate Juneteenth.
Anyone else? Pleasure to the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divataria?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number two?
A resolution to appoint Trey Tyser to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the remainder of a four-year term to end on June 14th, 2025. Mayor Pete Penpinto?
Uh, Trey, I think everyone had this link to their, uh, emails. Trey's, uh, been a citizen in the community all of his life, family-owned business, he's heavily educated in construction, he lives in Hammond, uh, and I think he'd be a good plus to the, the board. I'm asking the council to approve him, uh, to the board seat.
Trey, would you like to come up, say anything? Give us your name and address, please?
Trey Tyser, 115 North London. I think it'd be an honor to do it, and I think I can bring something to the table potentially. Um, it's new to me, but I'm up for the challenge. Y'all have any questions for me?
I'm glad to see you interested in it, and I'm glad to see you made it here today and, and showed up, and I appreciate, you know, your time to come before.
and, and showed up, and I appreciate, you know, your time to come before us. And, and, you know, it's an important board and has a lot of, lot of, you know, pretty much is backbone in a city really with a lot of planning and zoning issues that come up. So it's a very important board, and I'm glad to see you have interest in it and wish you luck on it and hopefully you enjoy it and, and make some good decisions.
I intend to, thank you.
Trey, thank you for being willing to serve.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Anyone else on this item? Pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divataria?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Resolution number three?
Resolution to accept the proposal for recycling services at the one ninety facility, Lacey Landra.
This is the one that we were just speaking about. If you would like to table this for tonight, have more time to review it, the, we only received really one bid on it. We did have two no bids. So the, the increase is very minimal, but it would still enable recycling services on the first and third. But I will follow up with Councilman Divataria's request. I know that there was also perhaps some difference between AM Waste versus Waste Pro, who has been servicing that.
I would like to table it, you know?
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. Make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to table. Do I need to read it all out? Okay, make a motion to table.
Second. Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divataria?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Resolution number four?
A resolution, one, accepting a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration for runway eighteen thirty-six rehabilitation, construction at the Hammond North Shore Regional Airport, and two, authorizing the mayor or his designees to complete and sign related documents. David Laboue?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We did the design of this project, you'll remember, last year. We funded our, our engineers to, to do that for us. Now we're in the construction phase for this, and it's time to accept the grant and award the contract. And that's why you see these, this item and the next item back to back. I will, I will tell you that we're doing this in advance like, like we normally do. We're expecting the contract shortly, both from our engineer to execute with, with our contractor that's going to do this, the one that's been selected. And we're also going to get a, a contract from the FAA for their ninety percent portion of the grant that will fund, fund that contract. And typically, as I've explained before, what's going to happen is the FAA is going to send it to us on a Wednesday, a week and a half from now, and they're going to say, get this back to us by the end of the day tomorrow, which doesn't give us the time to come to the city council at that point.
Is this for the same item that's next regarding the bid?
It is.
Okay.
Exact same item.
Can you address, even though it's the next item, that it looks like we're over budget? And do we have money to award a bid?
So there was an engineer's estimate done, and the FAA basically, long story short, we get, we're, we get about six hundred thousand a year in entitlements. Whenever there's a big project like this, the FAA has to go out and pull money from other projects so that they can give us four and a half million, five million, whatever it takes in this case. As everyone knows, with construction costs the way they are right now, you get, you get bids, you get estimates, prices go up. So the FAA has promised us that the money will come from somewhere. And they're actually in negotiations right now with the, the lowest bidder to get those costs even lower based on material substitutions and things like that. So it will, it will be paid for, nothing.
The money will not be found from our budget, though. That's my question.
Correct. Nothing, nothing will come from the city. Ninety percent FAA, ten percent state.
Perfect.
Hundred percent covered. Anyone else on this item? Pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divataria?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Resolution number five?
A resolution to ratify and award bids received for runway eighteen thirty-six rehabilitation, construction, pending final F, Federal Aviation Administration approval. David Laboue?
As we were already mentioning, we've, we had, you'll look at that bid tabulation that, that was attached to that, and we had three, three bidders. Hendrick's Construction out of Baton Rouge was the lowest bidder, and that is who we are currently negotiating a contract with. And again, that will be ninety percent FAA and ten percent state.
Can we just make sure, Andre, that it's clear that we award a bid that is here and then it's over, that, that if we award a bid and then all of a sudden the money isn't there, that we're not on the hook for the city having to pay because all of a sudden the ninety-ten is only to a cap and our amount is over?
If the money's not there, you just don't sign the contract.
So that's why, that's why the item for accepting the grant from the FAA was first.
Right.
Once the FAA sees what the amount of the draft contract is, then they'll write the grant, and they'll send that to us to accept. We'll accept that money, then we'll, then we'll execute that contract.
I just want to make sure that we're not stuck with something that we awarded a contract and then the funding doesn't match that amount.
Anyone from the public? Pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divataria?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
And Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Resolution number six?
A resolution, one, supporting the submission of a thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cent grant application to the Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership to purchase a new, to purchase new and replace body armor for Hammond Police Officers, and two, supporting a cash match of eighteen thousand, four thirty-six point twenty-five for the Hammond Police Department. Charles, Charles Barsher.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is one that I think this council has become aware of. We, we bring it to you guys every, every year. The amount does change from year to year because we have, in, in, the number of vests that we replace every five years, they're on a five-year replacement cycle. It varies depending upon the year. In some years, we hired more officers or we issued more vests. This amount is enough to cover about thirty-five vests. We have about thirty that we'll need to replace. Because of our mandatory wear policy, our replacement cycle is five years over the next two years. This grant adds us to forecast out two years. That's where the thirty comes from. We usually add about five to that to cover new hires or if a vest gets destroyed in an accident or if we have a natural disaster, we can use these grant dollars to, to replace that vest. The cash match will come from the Hammond Police Department. I've already spoken with the chief about that. So the, the total amount will be thirty-six thousand, eight seventy-two. Fifty, we'll get fifty percent of that in grant funds if it's approved by the Bulletproof Vest Partnership, and then we cover the remaining fifty percent.
Anyone from the public? Any question from anyone on the council? Pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divataria?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Resolution number seven?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for professional services with Spangler Engineering LLC in an amount of five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars for engineering services associated with sanitary sewer evaluation survey and sanitary sewer rehabilitation, which is being funded with a six point seven two million in American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, and Water Sector Program, WSP funds. Charles Barsher.
So this is the big one. We've talked about it before. I've come to the council when we've applied. We actually applied twice, if you recall, to the Water Sector Program, and in round two, we were successful in getting five million dollars through the state program for sewer rehab. So the plan has been to take one point seven two million in ARPA funds, which we have, and supplement those with five million dollars in Water Sector Program funds and be able to do six point seven two million dollars in improvements. This is in addition to the eight hundred thousand dollars in SSAS, the survey work that was completed. There's about a two million dollar project that's underway now for rehab. So I'll all that up, and we'll have vested roughly ten million dollars in, in sewer rehab in the last couple of years, which is really unprecedented. We did an RFQ for this, request for qualifications. We had two respondents. Spangler Engineering was the highest scoring of the respondents, which is why we're asking the council to approve the contract with them. Their pricing is based on fixed pricing. I've also compared it to some of the standard rates, and they're actually a little bit lower than some of the standard rates for engineering costs, so we're getting a good value there. I think we all know Spangler Engineering, they're very familiar with our sewer system, so there's a benefit that's built in as well. We are in a very short turnaround. We need to be able to provide to the state to move forward with our Water Sector Program grant, engineering documents by August twenty-second. And so that was part of the conversation with Spangler Engineering. They've committed to doing that, so we should have our green light to proceed, hopefully in September or October, I would think, possibly sooner. This is, again, just the engineering cost.
Anyone from the public? Anyone from the council? Pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divataria?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you, Charles.
Resolution number eight?
A resolution to approve Courtyard Cafe located at one-one-zero North Kate Street, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one, to obtain a permit to sell on premise high-low alcohol. The owner is Brian Wong, Casey Gagel.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm before y'all this afternoon to get a onsite, on-premise alcohol for Courtyard Cafe. He's, Mr. Brian Wong currently is running Courtyard Cafe without alcohol, and he's just trying to add alcohol to an existing business. Mr. Brian Wong is here in the audience if y'all have any questions for him.
Just step up, Mr. Wong.
Brian Wong, one-ten North Kate Street. Trying to add a few little items, make it a very minor. Hours of courtyard for the summer, we close at four. On the school times, we close at six. You know, me and just my mind thinking the way kind of Hammond revolves in the restaurant cafe, you know, that type of business, you know, liquor is a very big percentage of sales, you know, including also, I think as me is, you know, reaching, getting closer to forty, finding places that I can drink at, you know, which I kind of find problems at going to, you know, kind of the younger age, a lot of people. It's like catered to that really younger twenty-one age, you know, around there. So I think adding this is just going to be really nice, you know, very light, only having a few items, you know, especially adding to coffee, espresso, martinis, those kind of things. I think it's going to be great. Do y'all have any questions?
To be clear, this is for restaurant, it's a restaurant license?
Yes.
Anyone else have any question?
No, no bar business for me. Yes, so, but I think the Saturdays, Sundays, I think it's very popular in downtown for this, so.
Anyone from the council? Pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divataria?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Thank you. Reports, mayor?
Summertime is here, as you can feel it. The pool's going to be open Saturday, eleven o'clock. Swimming lessons will be starting. The camp will be starting June fifth at nine o'clock. We want to thank First Guaranty Bank for being a fantastic partner for us. They're always contributing. This time, ten thousand dollars for our summer school program, so we're really thankful to First Guaranty Bank, Alton Lewis and their team over there for being a community involves bank.
Any other council reports?
I'll just note we have our budget work session June second, just so it's put out there, that's our next thing before we get to the budget, so hopefully we'll do some good work that day.
We have our first initial meeting for the Housing Enhancement Committee on the thirty-first at five-thirty this month, so that'll be the first one, so be the kickoff.
Be here?
Mm-hmm.
Five-thirty, okay. Any other report? You got a motion, motion to adjourn?
Second.